Douglas Patterson.
Here.
Dennis Garcia.
Here.
Justin Lee.
Here.
Pavel Lukas. Anthony Perez.
Here.
Eddie Lucero.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And just for clarification, Billy Romero is no... Did he s-
Oh, sorry, I skipped him. Billy Romero, sorry.
Okay. So we have a quorum, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to their public voyages, we are nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're moving on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes that anybody can make to the agenda? Having heard none, I have a couple. Do we have anything... what happened to the minutes from last meeting, Ms. Perkins?
I don't understand how to use Novus. So, we tried to put the agenda together and I couldn't get the minutes in. We're having Novus training tomorrow. That's what we use for putting these agendas together.
Okay.
So I apologize, the minutes are ready, but they weren't put out there with the agenda.
So we'll just double down next meeting?
Yes.
Do the March and April minutes then? Okay. And then my second thing was, you sent out a notice, and I made an error. I thought that the notice regarding the US-64 corridor study was tonight, and it was actually last night.
Right.
And I missed it. And so I would ask if either of you were there, if somebody was there, if somebody could give a brief summary of what they learned from that meeting, just so we can get an update on it. So, can we add that to matters from the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Sure.
I guess that would be item B. All right. Do we have an approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Citizens Forum, has anybody signed up for the Citizens Forum?
I don't think so.
Sir, you signed up to speak at the Citizens Forum? You're the only other citizen besides the usurper racist, Mr. Yarvitz. Would you like to speak?
One of the cases.
Okay, thanks. Do you want to note for the record that Mr. Romero is a- Is in the house? Better late than never, Chair, or Commissioner. Okay. No, nothing heard from Citizens Forum? Any matters from staff that we need to take out before we go to the public hearings?
The town council will be appointing the commission at the new... at the next council meeting. We have no additional information on them than that.
We're all fired.
I don't know. Honestly, I don't.
Ms. Perkins, you want to introduce our-
Oh, and then we also have an... our town attorney is Jacob Caldwell.
Hello, everyone. It's kind of awkward over here. I can sort of see some people. I'll try to use it to my advantage. It's a pleasure to be here, though.
You can hide for a while.
Thanks for your service.
And yours.
Okay, so let's move on to public hearings. Let's go ahead and discuss case number PG-2014-6 regarding a rezoning request from R4 to R6. I think this is the agent, Mark Yarvitz, to speak on this. We'd like to hear from Ms. Perkins on a summary briefly, and then Ms. Yarvitz after that.
Okay, I think Amy's gonna give the presentation.
Okay. If I could, I'm not confused, are we doing... So, our packet says 2004-17, right?
There's two of them, so there should be a-
There's two of them. This map is showing-
The seven is gonna be the second one for rezoning of C1 and C2.
What?
But we're on 2014-6.
They have the same cover page.
They actually put the same cover page.
Commissioners Perez and Patterson are pointing out is that the cover page for 2014-6 and seven have the same first page, although the content underneath them for the other, I guess, six is actually for the C2 to C1 change, I believe. Or C1 to C2 change.
Really?
Yeah, that's how it was.
Oh, I see.
Thank you very much.
I see what you're saying. You're right.
See what I'm saying? But everything else is fine.
Okay.
So are we starting with-
Yes.
We're starting with six?
Correct.
Six is fine, seven is not.
Seven's fine, except for the map on the first page.
And the introduction, the key summary paragraph-
Yes.
Is for La Posta Road.
Correct.
On number seven. But seven's not La Posta Road.
Correct.
Yes, I know. We just discovered those there. Thank you for looking at it. We now know you read it.
But the analysis that was gone through on the findings of fact, page 13, all has to do with C1 and C2.
Okay, so we're dealing with La Posta Road first.
Correct. Amy.
All right, so currently, so we're looking at the subject property is 441 La Posta Road, which is at the corner of La Posta and Ranchitos. It is currently zoned R4. And the applicant, which is four directions, Asif Razani, with his agent, Mark Yarvitz, are requesting a zone change for an R6. And so, the map that we have gives a little bit of a breakdown of the existing zoning around the site. To the north of the site, we have R4. South of the site would be R2. R1 is gonna happen to the east. And then R4 is west of the subject site. And so we do have a couple of breakdowns on the two different residential zones. And staff recommends approval.
Commissioner Patterson.
Doesn't that make a spot zone? How can we zone at R6 when it's not contingent to any R6s?
Our feeling is that the... that the R4 across the street seems like it's pretty high density because of the streets that are there. If you go down the street, you hit Valverde Street. And after Valverde Street, it's R14. We measured that out. It's a little over 400 feet. And the notice radius is 300 feet. So we felt like that the R14 was actually in the neighborhood, even though the adjacent parcels are R4 and R2 and then R8.
Just looking at the map, it kinda seems like the definition of a spot zone, though.
Yeah, that's the 300-foot radius. And then if you go 400, then you hit the R14.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. And this is only our recommendation.
Okay.
You know, the commission does make their own decision.
Okay, continue on, I'm sorry.
Okay, and we went through the criteria. There's actually five criteria for rezoning or for a text amendment. And we'd like our staff report to be part of the record. Did you want me to go in more detail? Or do you want the applicant?
We can probably go ahead and use the applicant. Can you get under control, Justin?
Gonna put a muzzle on him.
State your name for the record.
Mark Yarvitz.
And do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
The project we're looking at here is... Just if I may, might answer a little bit of Mr. Patterson's question about R6. R6 came in as a zone only a few years ago. And there really is only a couple of parcels in the entire community that are zoned R6. So, in terms of a spot zoning, it's kind of hard to get an R6 zone where there really isn't any R6 zone anywhere in the community.
It doesn't have to be adjacent to the same zoning, though. It has to be adjacent to zoning that's the same or higher.
To R14 or something or higher, yeah. But just as a reference. And across the street is the Taos County Community Housing Development, which is really a higher density than in R4 directly across the street by the county doing what they wanted to do, not following zoning precisely. In any event, this project was requesting a... It's currently... There are nine mobile homes on this property, including a couple of buildings that are in the same shape as the mobile homes. And the owner of the property and I looked at redeveloping it into a... One of the options we're looking at is doing an apartment complex there. And from previous experience dealing with an apartment complex, the cost of infrastructure involved in apartments is such that the density of an R6 would allow a few more units. Right now, it has capacity under the zoning of about 16... It's about 4.16 to 17 units. And we're hoping to get 24 to 26 units on it for the same cost of infrastructure. And the cost of infrastructure per unit is one of the main issues in an apartment complex. Just to digress a moment, the previous project you approved for me, the Tarleton/Dragonfly Apartments, is going back through a complete redesign because the costs involved and the budget were way over the amount allocated for an apartment project. And we're going back in and redesigning that to accommodate the costs involved. And having learned that from the previous project, we will be coming back before probably P&amp;Z with that project as well as historical review in order to make that one work. Using that experience, trying to see if we can get an allowance to go to an R6 zoning would allow us capacity to do a nice apartment complex there as opposed to not redeveloping at all and leaving it as just a scattered mobile home park with maybe a few more mobile homes on there at some point. So we haven't really done any... We've done some preliminary planning, but really haven't spent any money on engineering to the degree required for any site plans. And as you know, the new zoning requirements do not require site plan expenditures yet until the zoning is approved. Then we can decide how many units we're going to be designing for. So the preliminary work here is if we can get an R6 zone, we can design it under one set of density rules versus what we have, which may or may not work based on, again, infrastructure cost per unit.
And Ms. Yarvitz, the question I have is if, for some reason, the apartment complex that you're planning fails for some reason, budgetary or otherwise, what this would do is increase the density of a mobile home park? So theoretically, the person that got the zone change could actually put in more mobile homes, correct?
We designed it out as a mobile home park originally. The previous rules prior to 2005 allowed eight units per acre under the mobile home PUD in an R4 zone. And we originally thought we could do close to 32 mobile homes on that property with the existing zone. That has since changed unbeknownst to me and several other people in the planning department. We designed it out in the capacity for the mobile home park based upon individual lots. We could barely get more than 19, 20 on it as it was based on the land configuration and setbacks and the drainage area. So, the fallback position is four times... I think it's 4.8 acres. So four times 4.8, it's about 18 or 19. So the fallback position would be probably is 18 or 19 total units as a mobile home PUD. But the owner decided that really wasn't what he wanted to do in that neighborhood. We're looking for an apartment complex rental. So the fallback, given a decline of the R6, would be an expanded mobile home park to 19 units. And based upon setbacks and individual units, I don't know if we could take advantage of an R6 at that point. I couldn't design it to make that work.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Just a question for City, the town. Has there been any correspondence from any surrounding neighbors for or against the zone change?
Yes, I believe the applicant actually talked with some of the neighbors.
I spoke with Debbie Friday on behalf of her mother. She asked me all the questions and I explained to her what we were doing. And I told her that there was no guarantee that it would be an apartment complex till we went through, excuse me, the entire budgeting process. But she said she would be in favor of the zone change for an apartment complex any day of the week. She said she would write a letter of support if required. And then I did speak to Mr. Struck for a little bit about him representation of some of the neighbors out there and answered some of his questions. And he's here to ask more questions pending on the presentation.
Mr. Yarvitz, the property that you're talking about, having been raised in this area, knowing that property is rather swampy and whatnot, some of that property was actually filled in by field dirt and whatnot.
Yes.
What are you gonna do to mitigate those problems?
We've already dealt with FEMA on that and looked at the elevations and we've made some corrections. The current FEMA map was off and we spent six months last year dealing with FEMA getting corrected elevations and asking them how to mitigate the situation. The owners of the property bought it after the original or the previous owner somehow was allowed to dump debris and cement particles on that property. And one of the situations would be to clean that up. And that would be some of the open space park that they were gonna put together as part of a project. In an apartment complex, we're looking to do all the units with... There might be, you know, four to six units in one, in each module. So the ability to put them on the property wouldn't be difficult and still allow that entire area to be redeveloped and landscaped properly. As a mobile home park, we have to use every bit of the property and stretch it out because each mobile home unit has to be at least, you know, 4,000 square feet versus an apartment complex where you can put a footprint of, say, a thousand-square-foot two-bedroom unit. You could do four units in 4,000 square feet as opposed to one mobile home. So the ability to design this better as an apartment complex and recapture all of that, remove the debris and recapture that area is more accessible that way.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just one more question. The existing buildings that are there, the mobile homes, are they hooked up to the town in reference to water and-
Yes. Everything there is on city sewer and water. There are fire hydrants around the property, all utilities. I've met with Mr. French Espinoza previous to our DRC meeting that he did not attend. But we've gone over that. And he asked that if we went forward with his project, if we would allocate an easement or grant the town an additional section of land at that intersection of La Posta and Ranchitos because that needs to be 90 degrees squared up. And currently, it is not. It's a little bit of a safety issue with La Posta. He said if you can give us four or five feet of that corner so we can square up La Posta and Ranchitos. He said the owner said he would participate with that to make that safer.
Can we hear from members of the public now? Is that okay? Mr. Struck, would you like to speak?
My name is Mr. Struck. We have property in that area too. Most of you know it's a jetet's part. My wife's family owns most of the behind that area. The first question I have, Mark, is I understand that the Frenchy talked to you about straighten out that La Posta Road. As a matter of fact, in the meeting last night of the... Where they're gonna... Highway's trying to improve. They're gonna do the same thing. That's part of the deal with the... Because they wanna straighten that out and put a traffic light there and straighten out with- Carla de Hauvold? Is that the one that-
Carla de Hauvold.
Yeah, they're gonna straighten that one out completely. And then they're gonna... As far as I know, they have three options to... For Ranchitos Road from La Posta all the way to La Placita Road. That's a big deal that they're having out there. And there's three options that they're looking at. One of them is, I don't think a lot of people appreciate it, is make the main highway going towards town one-way and make Placita's Road one-way south. I think that's gonna be a big problem. Anyway, Ranchitos, they got three options too. And one of them mightn't like it because they wanna go from La Posta Road all the way to into town up to where the bank is. Make it a four-lane. And I don't think it's-
Make which road, Mr. Struck?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Struck?
Over here.
Mr. Struck, which road? They wanna make a four-lane?
Ranchitos Road.
Okay.
From La Posta all the way into town.
Okay.
And I doubt if you can get... That's the question that I asked, why? That's one of the options. The other option is to just to make... Leave it at two-lane, but put sidewalks on both sides. Which makes a lot of sense. That one of the biggest issues that they have. And I think it takes about five, six years to before they really start working on that. Yeah, there you go. Working on those roads. They wanna put another traffic light... They're gonna upgrade all traffic lights all over town. All areas. That's what they're talking about. So it's be a while. Now that's part of the deal from... We're talking on La Posta Road. Other question, Mark, that I had for you was where the Royal is, basically, the Royal and right away of the Thai line, electric line, it's already have, what, 20 feet on either side? I think it's 20 feet from electrical poles that go on that.
That's 15 feet.
What is it?
It's 15 feet.
On each side?
On each side, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So that basically, that's really cutting down on the piece of property, plus the Royal and what you're doing. I think you're- Right, so basically, that part, you can use an open space, right? As far as I know, it's... It can be left as an open space because it's already dedicated to the goal.
I'm gonna interrupt just for a second because it's not just the people in the room that are listening theoretically. So if you're gonna ask Mr. Yarvitz questions, go ahead and ask the questions and allow him to respond on the microphone so that the record can get it, okay?
That was one of the first questions that I had on it. The other part that I was concerned is how much land would you... Are you losing almost five acres with open space? An acre, about an acre, an acre and a half? You wanna lose that much? And the other one that... Question I have is is there an asachia running through that property too? And also, at the end, right by the substation that the electric company has, the land narrows down. Pretty sure it narrows down. And the other one that I have is that to go from R4 to R6, my question is how much of a mobile home park, how many does it increase from R4 to R6? And same thing with if it's built apartments. Those are some of the questions I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Struck. You're gonna have an opportunity to clarify some questions based on Mr. Yarvitz's answers, okay?
Those are very good questions. And the purpose of doing an apartment complex would be to do it under... Although nothing would be for sale, it'd be done as a planned unit development where things would be clustered together. So just to give you an idea, if we had 24 units and each unit was 1,000 square foot footprint, that's only consuming 24,000 square feet, which is half an acre. Versus each mobile home sits on about 4,000 each. So a mobile home park is spread out amongst the entire property whereas an apartment complex can be created with that density and then still include open space and setbacks. And, for instance, the asachia runs on one edge of the property. The power line is on the other property boundary line and the substation. We wouldn't be near... Anywhere near those things. And it would allow us to create more of an open space park area for the remaining parcel. Versus, again, it's about clustering the housing on a smaller portion of the land and not having to spread it out on the entire property. Okay, so the... So dealing with the power lines and the asachia and the drainage and the broken concrete debris, that can all be taken care of and handled. I cannot put, as an R6, I cannot put that many mobile home units on this property, even in an R6, because of the setbacks, the 20 feet between units. Right now, some of the units on there are improperly placed. And so the ability to do mobile homes on that property would push to the limit of design and push it as far back on every corner of the property to get an R6. So it's really not possible to get that kind of density except from an apartment complex. And that's why we're looking at doing it that way. And my... The owner of the property is very big on landscaping and creating, you know, zero scapeing. And he's done several other projects in town where he's done pretty nice landscaping. And he'd like to be able to accommodate that. Again, you get more space available with an apartment complex because you're clustering them all together instead of pushing them all over the place. And again, the asachia is on one side. Will honor all of the setbacks that way. The power line also. And the open space, there'll be plenty of open space left. We could probably do 26 units on two or three of the acres easily as an apartment complex versus the way it would have been done the other way. Do you want to ask another question?
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Yarvitz? Follow-up questions for Mr. Romero?
On these mobile homes that are here now, and I don't even know if this is something that... This is more for my curiosity. This project goes through, I mean, are we gonna have displaced families with 30... You know, it's been happening in Albuquerque and several other locations where they've developed a mobile home park and have given people minimal amount of time to seek an alternate place to-
Most of these people are on a month-to-month lease. And I have to say that the existing sewer and water is very old. Some of the old orange clay pipe, I don't know what it's called, that cardboard stuff. They've had several problems with the sewer and water as it exists, as they inherited it. And in order to, again, to spend the money to redo all the sewer and water, there's no economic benefit to the owner to fix any of those problems. So most of the... So some of the mobile homes are on... Right there now are on borrowed time anyway. But they would be given sufficient time. Nothing's... These things don't happen quickly. So if we think we can get a project done, it might take us another year to design, develop, and finance. Maybe a plenty of notice. But most of them are on month-to-month. And there's a couple of buildings on there that aren't mobile homes that really should be removed. I don't know how to say that safely.
I'm looking at this, it looks like this grassy meadow isn't something that's gonna be developed you know, from behind the mobile homes.
We haven't done a site plan yet. And I think that in the area, in the front of the area there, most of the units we put together... Again, when you do an apartment complex and they're all dense together, it leaves a lot more open space just to be open. The grassy meadow, based upon design, most of that'll probably be left at the north end. But again, we haven't done a site plan for this. Right. I'm hoping for either six fourplexes or four sixplexes if we can get to that density.
And, Mr. Yarvitz, do you know the R14 that's, I guess, northeast of there on Ranchitos? What's on that R14 property? Do you know off the top of your head?
No. I know across the street, the county project is more than an R4 density already because they were allowed to do their project without following any town zoning rules. And that's a county-owned property. And across the street, it's almost a de facto... I wouldn't say R14, it's probably an R10 across the street. And there's also bus stop service right there. And there's also bus stop service right there that facilitates that place. As well as, again, this is a great infill project, all utilities are there. So it's, and I don't know if you know, but currently nationally, we're facing the least amount of vacancy available for apartments in the country since the year 2000. And anybody who's involved in renting apartments out here in town know that you put something on Craigslist, you get four phone calls in one day. So we have a serious need for apartment complexes. And because this is walking distance to the plaza, we think that it's a great opportunity. And there's no historical overlay to deal with.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Yarvitz? Is there anybody in the public, other than Mr. Struck, that would like to speak? Mr. Ballas? Okay. Having heard none, do we have, do we have a motion? The public hearing is closed. And go ahead and go to a motion. Do we, do we have anybody that'd like to make a motion?
Commissioner Lee?
Yep.
Have a few things to offer, I think.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion? So as we know, you know, a zone change arrives with the land. Right? So a zone change that, right now at R4, I think for 4.8 acres, you know, they could put 19.3 units on the land. A zone change to R6 would take it to 28.9. So, but, but as we said, a zone change runs with the land. So if we, if we make a zone change, it doesn't matter if, if Mr. Yarvitz is talking about apartments, zone change arrives with the land, sell the land, whoever gets the land can build up to that density. I think it's a sensitive piece of land, obviously. You know, we have the spring ditch and the asachia running down one side. We have a wetland running down the other. It's a triangular piece of land that makes it difficult. And right now, the entry and the exit to that piece of property is at the intersection of La Posta and Medio. Three roads coming together. I would feel a lot more comfortable if it were something as a PUD. Something that, that, that the conditions for the development ride with the land and takes into account all those things. Martha, is a zone change, how many steps do we have to a zone change right now? What's the process for a zone change?
The process for a zone change is it goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Or preliminary and final, or one hearing?
No, just one hearing.
Okay.
Because it went in front of the Development Review Committee, and this is part of the streamlining of the code. The commission does have the option to continue it to another, you know, set date and time. And then, once the commission makes a recommendation, then it goes to the town council.
Okay. So, you know, as is, with the density that's there, you've got close to 20 units. And for apartments, you would have close to 40 parking spaces. So as is, right now, you have all these conditions going on on this parcel of property. And if you tried to fit 20 apartment units and 40 parking spaces with those conditions that are going on there, I think it would really depend on how the parcel was developed. So I don't think a blanket zone change is something that would be really good for this. Having said that, I would love to see an apartment project there. I think it's a great use for that property, and I would love to see it happen. But I think it's something that would be, something that's specific to that property.
Can I ask you a question?
I think the public hearing is closed. So if we want, yeah, you should probably, I think you would step down. If we have any further questions, we would ask it. So I think it's up for discussion.
Ms. Perkins, is, is it possible to do a zone change with some kind of condition? A conditional zone change? Like conditioned upon approval of the site plan?
I don't think so. I think that's something that's more like a PUD. That's something that, where the development plan arrives with it. I think a zone change is typically a blanket zone change.
I'm just, I'm asking the town what they think.
I agree with Commissioner Patterson. A zone change is a zone change. You know, if a, if a project comes before me, I would probably request the commercial site plan approval through the Planning and Zoning Commission. But I don't know how another planning director would handle that.
Do we want to, does anybody want to ask Mr. Yarvitz any question? I know he has an answer for a question that nobody's asked. But does anybody have a question for Mr. Yarvitz?
I think, Mr. Yarvitz, if you'd like to respond to some of the questions I've run with you.
Thank you, yes. It would be great if it could be, I mean, I understand in our, in our six, conditional upon your site approval later on being a PUD. But I'm not sure you can request or require that. However, in order to do a site plan, to do anything at all, to make any sense out of this property, given all of the limitations, it almost, it almost requires a PUD anyway. And be hard of the applicant once the site plan is put together. But I can't guarantee...
As a PUD, you could apply for all sorts of density bonuses for, for...
I wouldn't say, no. Density bonuses aren't given under a PUD unless you're doing a cluster overlay, which I'm not sure still exists.
There's provisions for density bonuses for a PUD?
There are.
There are.
There are?
I think he's right.
Yes, there are.
There are. If you could refer me to that section so I could review that.
I don't have it in front of me. I'll be happy to find it.
I wasn't sure that, I, every time I've looked at the PUD, it's always based upon existing density in the current zone. Because the only way I was allowed to get additional density was with a cluster overlay, which we might do, but I'm not sure.
It's in the PUD?
If you could find it, that might solve my problem. I don't have an issue with that, but I never found that as an option.
Any other questions for Mr. Yarvitz? Mr. Caldwell, would you like to say something?
Not really, Mr. Chairman. You know, in my limited time with the town, I believe it is within the PUD provisions of the Land Use Code, though. And, Mr. Yarvitz, I think it's in, I'll defer to Planning, but Section...
It's, um, section...
I think, I've got 16.16, .190, .4.
Yes. I have read it, but I don't understand it. That's okay.
I think under a PUD, I've used it to apply for a density bonus in previous projects. And it's a good formula, and it gets you, I think it'll get you the density that you're looking for.
Any other?
So that was out there for discussion. I think that's just kind of my two cents in terms of the issues that I see with the project. Chairman Lee?
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Does anybody else have any other comments, opinions? Seems like, Mr. Patterson, Commissioner Patterson, that you're leading to a, some type of motion. But anybody else want to speak before we get to that? Mr. Patterson, do you want to make a motion?
So no other discussion from the commissioners on? If there's, you know, if there's another viewpoint to this project, I'd be open to it. I think that's just the way that I see it.
Well, if it went to an R6, when they bring their site plan, they'd have to bring it before the commission again.
No, if it's a zone change, they could apply for a building permit to develop it to R6.
Any other discussion? No?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if we'd, how we'd, or if I could address this or not, but with Mr. Struck, was he here to speak on behalf of the rest of the Dent family? Either for or against this project? I didn't believe.
I don't know that it matters. I think that everybody got notice of what was going on here. So he's here to speak, he gave his opinion, and we know what it is. And I think that's as far as we need to take it.
Okay.
So I can make a motion if that's where we're at?
Please.
Okay. So in regards to the case number PZ 2014-6, rezoning request from R4 to R6, I think right now I'd make a motion to, I think I'd make a motion to deny it. And that motion is not based on not supporting an apartment project there. I just think it's not correct to support a zone change without a development plan on such a sensitive piece of property. So I'd be in, in big support of an apartment project. I'd like to see that density there. But I think it depends on how you develop that parcel. And I don't think it's a blanket approval for a zone change. So right now, my motion is to deny, deny the request.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Garcia. Now that we've had a second, we have any further discussion before we go to vote? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion passes, spiked to zero.
Okay. Mr. Yarvitz, you're up again, pretty soon here. Can we move on to the, for the next item on the agenda? Which is case number PZ 2014-7. This is a rezoning request of C1 to C2. The agent is Mark Yarvitz. And it is in regards to approximately 8.789 acres, located at 1127 Paseo del Pueblo Sur in the town limits. Ms. Perkins, would you like to give a summary? Amy, would you like to give a summary?
I'm gonna be doing the summary as well. And so for this one, this property has a split zone on it. The front part of the zone, the front part of the property that fronts Paseo del Pueblo Norte, or Sur, I'm sorry, is zoned C2. The back part of the lot, which fronts Gustorff, is zoned C1. And so the applicant is asking for those, for a zone combination. So that's just C2 for the whole parcel. And so the staff recommends approval for this. The surrounding uses are primarily general business, C2. There is a middle school across Gustorff from this area. But staff doesn't see any kind of C2 development having a negative impact on the surrounding areas if, if the whole parcel was to be zoned C2.
And what are some of the, I know that it's in the options, but what are some of the different types of C2 commercial projects that could occur here?
There are only really slight differences between a C1 and C2 when it comes to what are allowed. And if you flip to the back of the packet that we've handed out, those differences have been highlighted. So in a C2, you can have a lodging establishment as one of the permitted principal uses. Anything allowed in a C1 is also allowed in a C2. When it comes to conditional uses, a C2 will also allow go-karts, carnival, thrill rides, amusement facility. It will also allow wholesaling or distribution operations. The development standards has slight differences in the maximum lot coverage. So in a C1, your maximum lot coverage would be 50%. In a C2, you would have 60% lot coverage. Those are some of the bigger differences between a C1 and a C2.
And the surrounding properties on Paseo are?
So to, the north is actually the command center for the town. Then we also have, across Gustorff is the middle school. And then south is more commercial uses.
Is that where the oil change place is?
And there's also the Quality Inn Hotel. And across Paseo del Pueblo Sur is a strip mall.
Okay. Can we hear from the applicant now?
Please state your name for the record.
Mark Yarvitz, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Before we get started, thank you for your discussion on the previous project. And I think identifying some of those tools in the PUD that I was not aware of from my older book will allow me to get to where I need to do to do an apartment project there, anyway. Thank you.
Would love to see an apartment project there.
On this project, this is 8.8 acres, as you know. It used to be 10.8 acres. Two acres was sold as the command center. It's bordered by the drainage channel to the south. And been approached over the last couple of years randomly, but not successfully by a few different businesses that wanted to go in there, but with a split zone. If the building crosses that zone, under C1, you're only allowed a 10,000 square foot footprint without a conditional use versus 30,000 in the C2. And to do any development design work on an eight-acre project at a split zone is very difficult. Not knowing where that line actually is drawn, I could get Ed Ramsey to come close. It was done, those C1, C2 lines were drawn back when the zoning was done, exactly so many feet off the main highway, and just right up the corridor, without taking into account various properties. So this property originally was part of the Weimer family. My client bought it many years ago, sold two acres to the command center. And we've been trying to deal with, now that the marketplace is coming back and this property is basically in the top dead center of town. According to Mark Cowan and Associates, the physical population is right there at the intersection of 522. Half the people live south, half the people live north. As you know, Mr. Cunningham is redeveloping his property from commercial to agricultural. And whatever that means, we'd like the ability to design an eight-acre project. I don't know if it's gonna be split or not, or how it's going to go. But right now, it's difficult for me to follow two different sets of rules on a project like this. And so we're here to see if we can get it zoned as one zone before I get started.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Yarvitz?
Chairman Lee?
Commissioner Patterson?
I have a question for staff.
Okay.
Ms. Perkins, how do you apply development standards on one parcel that has two separate zones?
As Amy pointed out, the C1 and the C2 are not that different as far as the allowed principal uses. We have actually talked, the town attorney and I, about what to do about these parcels and maybe adding something in the code that says if it's split zone, that one of the zones can be used for the entire parcel. So that we can clear up this problem with the Pueblo del Sur.
In terms of, I'm sorry, my name's Doug Patterson. I don't think we've met before. I haven't been here for company.
Hey, Amy.
Amy. Hi, Amy. Amy, could you run us through the development standards again on C1 and C2? In terms of like setbacks and lot coverage? I know you did it to begin with there. I know you started off in your presentation, if you could just kind of reiterate it for me?
Yeah, not a problem. So, and it's, there's a little breakdown on the back of your guys' packet, too, from the staff report. And so it's the last two pages. And when you look at the development standards, if you were to put a housing unit on it, you would go with the R14 setback standards. If you were to do, the minimum lot sizes are gonna be the same at 7,000. Your minimum lot widths are gonna be the same at 70 feet. Your setback requirements are different between when you create a single family, between the C1 and the C2. So for a C2, you would be creating a minimum... That one would be going for the... R14? R14. And then for the C1... And then for the C1, you would be using the R6 as your setback standards. Your multifamily would have setbacks at, your front setbacks for 10 feet, side setbacks at zero, rear yard at zero. Your residential zone, maximum lot coverage would be, and your C1 would be 50%, and C2 would be 60%. Trying to hit the high points on these.
I think, I think that's a good start. And Mr. Yarvitz, tell us again what, what it means to you in terms of the development standards between C2 and C1.
The main wish, the main issue is in the C1 zone, the footprint of your building is limited to 10,000 square feet without a conditional use permit. Whereas in the C2, you can go to 30,000 square feet without a conditional use permit. And that's the main issue in terms of crossing that line and developing something, whether it's one building. We were approached by the BLM last year, but they were, for an RFP to do a large project, BLM was looking to consolidate and expand, and this project, this property was identified. They subsequently pulled out the RFP and canceled it, but looking at it was, they were asking me, how do we develop a project, a BLM building is going to be 40,000 square feet, they wanted six to eight acres, et cetera. And I ran into this at the time, said we'll deal with it later. They since withdrew the RFP, which led, and then also, at one point, Lowe's was looking at coming in to do a project on the Cunningham property. They looked at this project and decided they needed 10 to 12 acres and it was too small. But again, the issue came up as I looked at developing it for a Lowe's, and it's just, it's just difficult, that's all.
Okay. I think Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
I think, you know, when you, when you look at the intent and purpose of the C1 versus the C2, you know, the intent and purpose of C2 is the C2 zone is intended in gen, is intended for general commercial uses and services along streets carrying large volumes of traffic. So obviously, the C2 side is on the Paseo side. And the intent of the C1 side is the C1 zone is intended for neighborhood oriented, small scale commercial uses, primary to supply convenience, goods, services to residents in the neighborhood along which the C1 is located. And, and that applies to the other half of the property that's along Gustorff Road. So, you know, I think if, if there was a concern, the only concern that I would see is by extending the C2 zone all the way to Gustorff Road, you're possibly extending the ability to use Gustorff Road for, for uses that are intended for large traffic volumes. And you're doing it right across from Taos Middle School, where we see 500 cars enter and exit from 7 o'clock in the morning until 8:30, and then again from 2 o'clock until 3:30 after, every afternoon, along with the bus barn and the command center and other things. I think that what a conditional use permit does is a conditional use permit allows you to look at a project and identify those things that are going along, that are going on with the project and, and gives you an opportunity to deal with them. So I think that would be my only concern between C2 and C1. If it, if there was a way to, to move the C2 boundary not all the way to Gustorff, and if that was a benefit to you, then I could see doing that. I don't know how we do that. You know, I don't know. We have a property right now that has, you know, two zones on it. Why, why can't we manipulate the boundary of those zones so the majority of the property was C2 and allowed you to develop a larger building without taking that C2 all the way to Gustorff Road?
What do you consider the command center, a C1 or a C2 project?
Don't know.
It's in the C1, and I think it's a C2.
I think it went through a conditional use permit. I know it went through a large planning and zoning process to get where it is, which allowed the commission to address all those concerns. But it wasn't rezoned to a C2, at least not according to this map. I'm looking at this map, right? This is the current zoning. So the command center is a C1.
So, if I, if I, if I put it into less abstract terms, if you had a, for example, a Lowe's there, you would have a lot of traffic coming in off of Gustorff, a lot of, you know, people unloading and loading.
Again, it would depend on how the site is developed. So right now, the C, the C2 portion that touches Paseo is tiny. That's that tiny little neck of the property that goes up and touches Paseo. So if this were developed into some large scale project like a Lowe's or something like that, I think there would be pretty challenge to get all their access out of that. So you wouldn't want to see delivery trucks coming up and down Gustorff for a Lowe's or some other large development.
I don't know if you have it in your booklet, but we have a, an approval from the DOT in conjunction with the landowner in the front to do an access from Paseo del Pueblo Sur with a right in, a right out, and a left in, as designed and approved but not built out yet. As a, as part of this project, there was a land swap with the gentleman that owns the, there's a land swap on the books that has not been completed pending certain other clarifications. I don't know if that's in your application or not. Do you see that? Did you, did they get that? Back page?
The last page of your, some map.
We didn't get that. We submitted.
The last last page?
Did I not submit the, no, the, the, submitted the, I think I just submitted it to you. So what we have is a 50-foot easement at that intersection on Paseo del Pueblo Sur with a DOT design already approved. It's only approved to a point because the DOT won't approve everything until you give them a usage before they do so. But the gentleman that owns the oil and loop shop, who has the triangle piece of property, Mr. De Godoy, who we all know and love, we did a swap with him that's on the books not completed, where he will square off his property in exchange for a 50-foot easement. He's, we have about a 24-foot access at that point, and he has a driveway there. So we've agreed and we have a complete design already. He already got a DOT approval for that ingress egress, which I thought was submitted with this, and I apologize if it wasn't. I could resubmit that. But, so the purpose of that was to show that we could have from Paseo del Pueblo Sur a right in, a right out, and a, a left in, but not a left out. And similar to what the Walmart has, they have a couple of those driveways where you can just do A, B, and C, but not A, B, C, D. And that's been approved by the DOT already. So the traffic would be coming in from the front, not from the Gustorff side primarily. So I'm sorry that wasn't in the document.
Mr. Yarvitz, do you have any idea of what kind of project would be developed here?
No. Probably some kind of retail project with that much exposure and visibility in the center of town with access from Paseo del Pueblo Sur. Whether it's a retail strip mall or a Lowe's or some kind of project that wants that much visibility from the Paseo side is what we're looking at. And there, in the larger projects, we're looking at whether or not it's a, Lowe's has an outside yard, if Target wanted it, and they would look for about six to eight acres, that kind of a project. I don't know. We're just coming out of the dark ages and hopefully some economic development will occur on that property.
Chairman Lee?
Mr. Patterson?
You know, I, I think when we, when we think about large developments like that, if we think about Albertson Smiths, Walmart, you know, all, anything of that size requires multiple points of access. And all of those developments of that size that we see so far in this town have two to three access points on the major streets. And I still don't, I still don't see, I, I think extending C2 all the way to Gustorff Road would be a mistake with one access point onto, onto Paseo. It seems like you're specializing in difficult properties, so you mean.
Taos is not, lack of difficult properties.
No, there's a lot, I think there's a lot of properties on Paseo that, that aren't difficult to develop for, for, for large parcels like that.
They haven't found me for help.
No. But I think, I'm not sure, you know, I'm just not sure extending C2 all the way to Gustorff makes sense, you know, for, for a use like that. You know, again, I don't, you know, I don't mean to be the lead in the sack here, but I think, you know, a property like that would really depend on how it's developed and not necessarily what's developed there.
The difficulty I have with, at the planning department is drawing an imaginary line in the sand, and then when you cross it, does it have to be a PUD in order to do that one also there?
I don't know. We have an imaginary line in the sand right now, so I'm not sure, you know, if we, if we move that, I'm just not sure it makes sense for C2 to go through to Gustorff right across from the middle school. That's what I'm having trouble wrapping my head around. And I'm having trouble, trouble wrapping my head around a Lowe's, a Walmart, a 40,000 square foot BLM development that would only have one access. So I think any kind of development that size is going to have multiple access points.
Gustorff would be an additional access, there's no question about it.
Right. And Gustorff is a, is a two-lane 25-mile far road with, that's overloaded right now with two schools on it, Taos High School and Taos Middle School. So I think that's, that's my two cents.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Garcia.
The, the intent for the zone change right now is just for marketing purposes, or is, that's basically, there's no plan or anything that you see that's?
Correct. It's difficult for me to explain to someone from out of town what it is we're dealing with here on a split zone and how you develop something like that. So I just thought it makes sense to do a single zone so I could continue trying to solicit some economic development for the property. I mean, the other option is, we've considered is to do another administrative lot split and split the property, C1 and C2, access the C2 from the front and the C1 from the rear and, and do some of that. And I didn't like, neither the owner of the property nor I liked that concept of putting a, a small strip mall on the front and maybe live-work-housing style on the back. That might be an option, but that's not where the developer or the owner wants to go with this property. Right now, actually, the current owner of the property has decided rather than develop it, he'd like to just sell it to somebody else, and selling a split zone property is...
It has a much higher value as C2 instead of C1.
Correct. To, well, just to explain to somebody the rules.
You can make it all C1.
You can make it all C1.
Would, what about some kind of condition that, that, that any access onto Gustorff Road, you know, goes other, goes under some other level of street name? So zone the whole thing C2, but any access points onto C, onto Gustorff Road would have to be reviewed and approved by Public Works or Planning and Zoning or staff or whatever it is.
It's, it would seem that a, I don't think there's a sidewalk on the property, so most likely it would require either a widening or a decel lane, not that somebody going 25 minutes to decel, but...
That would be a 15 during school, school hours.
It's 15 during school, so I don't know if that would help if widening the street at that point there would be a condition of a build-out approval. That would probably where I would take it, but I don't know that. Again, the owner of the property, prior to all things considered, was going to work on developing it. In fact, at one point, the idea of putting the police station for the town was going over next to the command center a couple of years ago, and that RFP went out to put it over there. And since that has changed directions, the owner of the property is ready to move on. So he asked for the zone change.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Getting back with the traffic deal too, I mean, having big trucks going down Gustorff, you know, during school hours and after-schooling would be a big concern for a lot of the parents and the school itself. I know from personal experience with what we do, and, you know, with a 50-foot easement, there'd be no way that you'd get a truck or a big truck to turn in there off of, off of Paseo. You know, you've got a 48-foot rig coming in there, there'd be, it would be almost difficult or pretty near impossible to do that. I mean, to have that much increased traffic with, with big trucks, if it turned into that type of, of development along Gustorff during school hours and stuff, I think would be a big concern and safety concern also.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. Ms. Perkins, it's probably similar to the last case that I asked us on, but if, if we did convert this completely to C2, could we attach some kind of condition, or would the person just be able to get a building permit and go forward with a big development?
Well, my experience has been that commercial development requires a commercial site plan that's reviewed by planning and zoning. We, we have a problem with the current code and the way it's written in that it combines that rezoning with the site plan approval. And what I'm trying to do is separate them because I don't want to do contract zoning. And so, I mean, we haven't gotten a new rewrite put together for actually separating the commercial site plan from the zoning, but that is our intent. However, if I left tomorrow and there was a new planning director, I don't know how they would handle it. But normally with a commercial site plan, there is planning and zoning approval of that.
So all those?
I don't know if the town attorney can add anything to this or not.
Mr. Colbo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You know, this, I, I actually really appreciate the dialogue, and I find it very interesting that Commissioner Patterson, in the first application, raised the issue of viewing a zone application in light of the intended use. And in this application, has sort of turned it around to say that because we don't know what the intended use is, that we need to be careful with this rezone application, which I think is absolutely appropriate. I would urge the commission to move towards not attaching conditions to zoning applications as the planning director just suggested, because it makes it very difficult and problematic for staff going forward because of some of the reasons that Commissioner Patterson alluded to. If, for example, this developer didn't do anything, it's still zoned that way and is open to all the uses allowed pursuant to a new zoning designation. So in answer to, to the chairman's question, I don't think that the code precludes the attachment of conditions. At the same time, I certainly wouldn't encourage that as a practice. I also think that this particular application, as the previous one was, should be viewed in light of the appropriateness of the zone as C2 on this piece of land. The law certainly doesn't favor split zones. It would be nice to clean that up. I believe the commission should look to the requirements of the code for purposes of changing zone or textual changes within the code, which would, this would constitute, and perhaps even go through the criteria that has been laid out by the staff in determining whether it is appropriate or not.
Can we go through those criteria now?
Would it be the criteria in the application or in the staff?
In the staff, we have a combination of what the applicant turned in, what the review, so it starts on page 10. And so the first part is what the code criteria requires, and then we have the applicant's response, what, what was responded to us, and then what the staff response is, and whether or not we believe that the criteria is satisfied.
So the, the one that sticks out, according to some of the comments that have been made, particularly number four, the benefit to the neighborhood will outweigh any potential adverse impact upon the surrounding properties.
And the applicant's response to that was?
Properties in the center of town and future development of this infill property has many uses. There would be no adverse effect except for minor additional traffic in the area that already has an excess of capacity.
So that, that seems to imply that you're only assuming that access would be off of Paseo and not onto Gustorff?
We're looking at, by the, by that 50-foot access point on Paseo, that was where most of the traffic was going to come in from. We thought that would be maybe 80, 20, without knowing more than just guessing at that. In most cases, the second ingress egress from Gustorff would be more of a safety issue. Whether or not you could restrict access from Gustorff is a good question, I don't know. But the, from my perspective of police and fire... know, but the, uh, from my perspective of police and fire, you'd wanna have an additional ingress egress on any commercial property, at least two, as you identified earlier.
Yeah. And, you know, I think the also, the other thing that you're seeing there is that, you know, zones tend to buffer up and down in terms of density. So I think what you're looking at is the original zoning where you went from R4 to C1 to C2. And I think when we extend C2 to touch R4, you no longer have a buffer zone of densities, you know, you have a high-density use that, that abuts a lower-density use. Is there any other, Commissioner Lee, should we go through any of the other criteria there?
Uh, at your, at your wish, I, you know, that's the one that really stuck out to me. I mean, health, safety, and welfare of the community, which is really our, our main kind of theme or thesis that we apply. You know, you could make an argument that, um, by making it C2, that you're creating economic development, which could lead to higher GRTs, which could lead to a, a more positive community. And you could also say that by having, um, uh, more traffic, people frustrated driving in that area, that it could endanger, uh, children that were at the school and make just generally the, the welfare of the community in a more poor state because of the traffic.
I wish there was a, a way to achieve both. I'm all, I'm all for, you know, zoning it up and having a higher-value property that would, you know, that would, that would help a landowner out and, and, and the town would benefit from sales. But, but I'm also, um, you know, I don't think we can deny the fact that we have, you know, and, uh, that's, the traffic coming through the middle school is one-way traffic, um, so we're dumping five to six hundred cars going north and south onto Gustorff for, for two hours a day, um, including all the bus traffic. So, and, and right up the road we have Taos High School, and I don't think we can ignore those two things. So, you know, I'm not sure if it helps the applicant to rezone a majority of the property to C2 and, and leave a hundred-foot buffer up and down Gustorff. If that helps, there's a majority. If not, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm just not sure how to wrap my head around how to achieve both.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Serra.
I think all the concerns that are brought up are really good ones. Um, I mean, we've certainly gotta consider those things, but I, I think, uh, Ms. Perkins, that if we were to change this and allow the change to C2, then the, the building standards and those requirements would be reviewed by the planning department, and at that time, if I'm not mistaken, at that time, the, when you're doing your, your reviews of the applicant's intent to do whatever they're gonna do in this property, uh, the concerns of safety, all those things would be considered, and if those things couldn't be taken care of at that point, it could either be denied or approved. So, um, I, I think that's something that would be up to the planning department at the time to take care of those issues, um, even though they are valid issues, but I think that would be where, it would be appropriate for you all to take care of rather than us.
Lady Commissioner.
Can I?
Mr. Yarvitz.
The single biggest issue that I was looking at between the C1 and the C2 is the building footprint. And so, we could get to the C2 standards by conditional use to exceed the ten thousand square feet, but it, it, that seems, that's, that was the main reason for looking at this if we're doing, I mean, a ten thousand square foot building is not that big, um, in a C2. In a C1, that is the limit without a conditional use permit, so it's not like, um, so any development at all, if it was all C2, we could go in and do a design, get approval, and pull a building permit. With the split zone, we have to come back to P&amp;Z for every approval, and it would probably, I don't, is there a PUD under commercial? There must be. And I don't know how that would work, but it would require an entire site plan, and it would require the next person in who wants to develop the property to really spend a lot of time, energy, and money designing something with no guarantee that what he's going to get approved, because it requires a conditional use rather than, the way the market is, is they're, they're coming in now, and if it's not shovel-ready as they say, they're moving on. Um, and Taos is a difficult place to develop as it is, and this is not shovel-ready with a split zone, and exactly where that line is, I don't know. Um, so that was the main issue for, for doing this zone change. It doesn't prohibit the owner from moving forward with the idea of selling the property, it's just makes my job as the broker to try to explain to the next person what he has to go through, which is what it is.
And then the flip side of that is, from a planning and zoning perspective, a conditional use is probably exactly the right thing for that property, so that you step back and you consider all those things going on in the development plan, so...
Or, or Mr. Yarvitz, you could wait until, uh, the...
P&amp;Z gets fired and replaced with other people?
Sure, I'm sure. For these two denials.
The P&amp;Z creates, creates their...
Like they're their number.
Until the...
I don't know, I, I know these are difficult projects, and I wasn't sure where they would go based upon, if I was sitting in your seat, what I would decide also. These are difficult properties for me as the agent to develop with the owner, and he says, "What does all this mean?", and I say, "It's difficult."
So does this, Ms. Perkins, this kinda blow your, your idea of amending the, the development code, the split zone to allow the person to pick?
Well, I didn't say that. I was saying that we, that, uh, we need to talk about how we're gonna do this, but having one zone, I mean, basically, rather than having it be two zones, have it default to one, based on some language that we write in the code. We haven't flushed it out at all. Actually, this discussion has helped me quite a bit understand some of the ins and outs. The one thing that I guess I, that occurs to me with these PUDs is that they also have a timeframe associated with them.
They do, three steps, right?
Well, it, once you get the PUD approved, then you have to commence development within so...
A year.
Within a year, right. Otherwise, you lose that, so...
It also requires town council approval now, which is an additional step, a PUD, PUD is a zone change on top of a conditional use, so...
So it's three steps.
It's not only three steps, but more politically unfriendly, depending on...
Well, this would also go to town council next, right?
A straight zone change goes to town council also, yes.
But those complexities would pretty much eliminate any commercial developer?
Um, you know, those that are faint of heart should find another place anyway, but I think it's a wonderful property if done, if designed and developed with the access from Paseo del Pueblo, um, and use of Gustorff as a secondary ingress egress, maybe of just an exit only rather than an ingress or something of that nature, I don't know. We've looked at several different site plans for the property and, um, we've come up with no conclusions other than, as the owner said, "Ah, just sell it." Is where we're at, so... If I had a specific project for this, then this would be a different issue. And we, since the change, the last couple of months, without the contract zoning, um, I don't have a specific project. Maybe when the next buyer comes in and we have a project-related situation, you're still not allowed to do that, change the zone based upon a specific project. That was eliminated, I believe, I don't know. Is that correct?
That's what, Ms. Perkins is trying to...
That's the way I'm, um, actually interpreting the code, just because I wanna make sure that we're legal about how we do zone changes.
Mr. Yarvitz, thank you. Uh, I'd like to open this up for a public, uh, hearing. Do we have anybody in the public that'd like to speak on this?
Please state your name for the record.
Stevens Hall.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question about the DOT approval, um, with respect to access to the property. Does that include a, an extended break lane to get into the property, or is it just a, a sort of a driveway-by-stem, stem lot kind of development, or do you know? Mr. Yarvitz?
No, we'd nope to sell that.
None?
No, because of the proximity to the traffic, like the drainage channel.
Right, exact, exa- exactly, exactly. That, that was my, that was my question, because that was the, the difficulty, is you're coming right out of the intersection and you've got the, uh, the drainage channel that you have to cross. That's all I wanted to know, but they did approve it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, difficult to believe. It seems clear to me that, um, this, despite the fact that I understand the difficulty of the C1, C2, where's the line? It seems to me, I don't understand why the line wasn't drawn at the beginning, but I would guess from this designation, the idea was to create a neighborhood there. Um, I think it says, east of subject site is R4, so right across the road is, is R4, right? And so, and it...
It's zoned R4 on the zoning map?
So that, that's residence and the whole...
But the, the location is actually Taos Middle School, so that, that entire parcel is Taos Middle School.
So how, how far away is the nearest neigh- quote-unquote neighborhood?
It's on Gustorff.
Right up, on Gustorff, right up the road.
Okay. With, you know, two minutes, a minute, two minutes away? Um, a nice walking kind of opportunity, and it seems to me, that's what I read from. I don't know how it got to be how it is, uh, but I think that, that's a good idea. I think it should be preserved. I don't think, I think the, the notion that Gustorff, if it's developed, is gonna be maybe a secondary access is just foolish. People, people are gonna use that, uh, there's no, no doubt about it, despite how much you wanna try and limit it. And the idea that it's gonna be eighty, twenty, according to Mr. Yarvitz, eighty off Paseo and twenty off Gustorff, is just a wild guess, just a, just a wild guess. Uh, I'd like to see somehow the notion of a neighborhood, uh, possibility in the future preserved, I don't know how you do it, but, um, I don't think, I don't think it's a good idea to, at all, to change this to all C2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, do we have any other discussion before we go to a motion on this? Having heard none, do I have a motion from any of the commissioners? Having heard none, are we gonna try to, somebody wanna table this and have further discussion later date, or...
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that case number two zero one four dash seven on, uh, changing from a seat, split, split zone, uh, to be denied due to traffic problems.
So you're, just to clarify your motion, you're conditioning the denial because you believe that there could be traffic problems related to the C2 zone, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second on that motion? We need a, we need a second so we can have a discussion on it.
I'll second it.
Okay, second from Commissioner Patterson?
And if I may offer a clarification?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I think you, uh, you should, uh, state the denial in terms of the criteria, and I think you could simply just, um, state the denial, the denial that, um, uh, in regards to criteria number four, um, the benefit to the neighborhood, uh, uh, will not outweigh any potential adverse impact on the surrounding properties.
Commissioner Perez, would you like to amend your motion as Commissioner Patterson suggested?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Uh, second from Commissioner Patterson. Um, is there any discussion regarding, um, this motion as it stands?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Garcia.
I, I'm just gonna make a comment here, first and second, um, on the denial of this, but I, I, I believe that as a commission, we need to look at, at development and opportunities that might help, uh, the community, and restricting or denying this, I, I, I have some difficulties with that. I understand the concerns of the school across the street and Gustorff Road, but I think there is, and I think, uh, Chairman Nacerro brought it up, that, uh, any development would come, come to the town and there could be some conditions placed on that and, and whatever takes place, but to, to just deny it without, th- this is what makes it real difficult, 'cause we don't know what the future's gonna bring and what the government's gonna be there, but, uh, on the base that we think the traffic's gonna increase drastically, not knowing what, what might be built there, uh, is a little challenging. So, you know, I, I don't support the denial, so I just wanna make that comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Is anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment as well, Chairman, um, I, I'm with Commissioner Mero as well. I think that, um, even with the C1 there and the access that it would have into Gustorff Road would still pose an in, an increase of, of traffic and, and potentially a problem for that area as well, so we're really not, um, if we're considering just that alone, I think that, you know, you're, you're gonna still have the same amount of traffic potentially with small businesses that are there as if you had just one big business there, so I, I don't support the denial as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee?
Uh, Commissioner Patterson?
You know, I'm, I guess I support both sides, you know? I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see, uh, uh, I'd like to see them have the capacity to sell a piece of land and, and reap the rewards of a higher zoning. Um, I guess the only thing I can't get over is a, is approving a, a C2 use, uh, and, and the uses that were quoted by the applicant were a Lowe's, a Walmart, you know, those, those types of development don't get by with one access onto Paseo. They need more than one access. When you make a zoning approval, it's a, it's a blanket approval, which means that somebody, all somebody has to do is apply for a building permit to proceed with construction. So you don't necessarily have another layer of review and approval on top of that. Um, I'd, I'd like to see the approval, but I just, I just don't think the uses that belong in a C2 zone belong on Gustorff. And when we make that zone change, you're saying that uses that belong on Paseo are now allowed on Gustorff to go all the way through Gustorff. So, I'd like to approve it, I just can't get to a point where we could approve it knowing that, right? So, that, that site does not support that, that scale of development. So, um, I agree with both sides, I just can't, um, I just can't get to the point, and, and it seems too broad to deny it, so, so I, I would be all for continuing it and, and letting this discussion go further and seeing if there's a way that we would have another layer of review upon a use like that going through to Gustorff Road. So, if, if there was a way to continue it and continue the discussion, I'd be happy to do that. So I just wanted to say that. I'm not, I, I don't, I, I also don't feel good about a blanket denial, because I'd like to support the developer and I'd like to support...
So then we have to vote on the...
Um, if we, right now, so right now, there's a motion to deny, we'd all have to vote no, and then we can make any motion.
Um, we're still in discussion, but Ms. Perkins, I'd like to ask you a question. Is, is that something, 'cause I'm hearing kind of two different sides of the same coin here. Uh, it, it seems that we've been led to believe that, on one hand, if, if you do create this as a C2 zone, that it's just get a building permit and they could go forward, but on the other hand, my understanding is that they would have to go through some kind of approval, uh, to actually put a commercial property on the C2-zoned property. Can you explain some of that?
Yeah, the, the problem is that this code is combining, um, the rezoning and the site plan into one step, and I have an issue with that because that's basically contract zoning, we're zoning for a specific project, and, and I can't do that. Um, the way that I would process this application would go through the rezoning first, and then the second would be commercial site plan review, which I would take to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, um, you know, I don't have any issue with continuing this discussion, but, um, this discussion's telling me though, is that what I need to do is go ahead and, you know, draft some text amendment and make the change, so that we separate the zone change from the site plan and we require site plan approval of, through the Planning and Zoning Commission for commercial site plans, so that we have both layers, and so that the commission can feel more comfortable about approving zone changes. And so I'm thinking, you know, I could probably make those changes and the attorney won't have to review them, and we could do the public notice and try and run this through, but, you know, we're still talking two months to actually get this through, and then it will be by ordinance, so there's a thirty-day appeal period, so, you know, we'll, we'll basically be delaying this application for, I would say, three months.
All right. Well, what Mr. Yarvitz said, if I recall correctly, was... Well, what Mr. Yarvitz said, if I recall correctly, was that this is just kind of to put it on the market, to be able to sell it, so it's not necessarily like they're trying to develop it immediately. My personal opinion is that I would feel more comfortable seeing exactly how it would play out. Now, I don't feel like I have enough information on that, so I would prefer to continue it as well this time. Mr. Yarvitz? Go ahead, just briefly.
One of the options that the owner and I looked at was to actually do a lot split between the C1 and the C2, develop the C1 as neighborhood commercial and the C2 as general C2 coming off of Paseo only. That still is a possibility, and then we wouldn't have these issues. It would just be splitting the property into two four-acre parcels. The only issue I would have is where that line actually is drawn in order to make both parcels usable. So maybe if we go that route, we decide that we might want to, as you mentioned, Mr. Patterson, to move that line a little bit to make the C2 portion of the front smaller but usable, and then restrict the backside to the C1, might be where we wind up as the, based upon, based upon your discussion, it sounds like that should be the appropriate plan anyway. But that's up to the owner, not me.
I don't necessarily know that that's how I would view it. I think that I would see it, you know, I like the idea of a C2 there. I like the idea of having the maximum economic benefit to our community, but I would want to see how that site plan play out.
Agreed.
So it doesn't necessarily mean that we're leaning that way.
I would prefer if you voted and not continued, if you can do that, and then deal with your planning issues separately. I don't necessarily know coming back would alleviate or fix the problem any more than it is.
Commissioner Lee? If we vote to continue it, the applicant can always choose to withdraw the application, so they can choose to come back and proceed with this application the way it is, or withdraw their application and come back and apply it another way.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Okay, so we have a motion, to clarify, we have a motion from Commissioner Perez regarding denying the application based on criteria number four, and it was seconded by Commissioner Patterson. We have to go ahead and go through a vote on that, so can we get a roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Romero?
No.
Commissioner Patterson?
No.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Commissioner Lucero?
No.
So six zero, the motion is denied or not approved?
So we denied a motion to deny.
Right.
So it's still pending. So what that means is we need another motion. Does anybody have a motion now?
I'll make a motion to continue case, P&amp;Z case 2014-7.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I would second that.
Okay, having a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Caldwell?
Pick a date.
Given that there were notification requirements and this was a public hearing, in order to continue without having to renotice, there's going to have to be a fixed date and time set for your continuation, if that is the will of the commission.
So the motion would then have to specifically say that we would continue it to the next hearing?
May 7th.
And in addition, Mr. Chairman, actually state the date of the hearing.
So what is the date? First Wednesday?
May 7th.
May 7th.
May 7th, 5:30 PM.
Okay, so the motion then, Commissioner Patterson?
May I amend my motion to continue case, P&amp;Z case 2014-7 to May 7th at 5:30 PM?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a resecond by Commissioner Lucero. Any further discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion passes six to one, so this will be continued. Six to zero, sorry.
Are you voting, Ms. Perkins? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to C, it's a discussion and possible direction to staff on ordinance 14-05, which is a continuation of the discussion from the last meeting. Ms. Perkins, are you handling this?
Amy and I are both handling this. We keep doing everything jointly. It helps to have another person to bounce things off of. You asked us the last meeting to look at the zoning map, and we were continuing this to this hearing. And so Amy identified the differences between the last adopted zoning map that we could find, which was in 2006, and what we found is that zoning map actually has some land that's been annexed in since, already zoned, even though it's not, wasn't part of the town. And then we also noticed a lot of the zoning did not relate to the existing map, so we found quite a few errors. And Amy also went through and pulled all the ordinances that she could find. Hopefully we've found them all. And so she says, "I'm tired of looking at this map. Every time I look at it, I see another issue." So anyway, to make, to summarize, we actually need to have more time to research the zoning a little bit more.
So what were the, if you want to go through some of the changes that you did make or find as errors, you could just, I mean, you don't need to go through every single one, of course, but-
Some of the big ones would be, there is an area that was zoned C2, and it has since been changed to RA, to the rural agriculture, and-
Thank you.
And it shouldn't be, it should still be C2. So that's, that's an issue, yeah.
And it was just on the map that that occurred, or did it occur through?
It's just on the map. There's no ordinance that took it back to the RA. It, years ago, had been RA. It was changed to C2, and now, for some reason, on this current map, it's back to RA, so we need to make sure that it actually goes back to the C2. Another issue that we have is on this map, there was an R4 that for some reason is now an RA, and there's no ordinance to go along with that. There's some actual updates to the zoning. There was a zone change in 2010 that actually changed a parcel from R4 to R6, and that's not reflected on the current map. So those are some of the, yeah. Oh, and then, we don't know what happened to that zoning, that was something we just found today.
To what?
It was C1 and C2 in 2006, and there is labels for it being C1 and C2 on the current map, but it's actually not highlighted in the proper colors, so we don't know what happened to that zoning. So we, and there's no ordinances that tie any kind of zone change with that. So as far as I know, I have found all the ordinances from 2006 through today for zone changes, and we just want to double-check and make sure that there's some problems.
Who had the responsibility of the map back then? Who was handling it for the town, do we know?
Well, so we've, we've had some discussion about that there might have been the ball being dropped when it, when an ordinance went through, that it might not have been handed off to the GIS to make those updates. And so we're trying to, so we're thinking about some of the issues.
Yes, and we're also internally looking at some of the processes. I mean, not only for rezonings, but then for the addressing as well. They, we originally had a GIS person, and he got moved to Public Works, so because of the distance, the communication hasn't been that good. So we're actually looking at that as far as a townwide thing, how are we going to make these processes work better so that we don't have all these errors in the future? And then, on a more regular basis, updating the zoning map and actually adopting it.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Garcia.
This was extended or tabled to today's meeting, and because originally it was requested for us to approve the map itself. You've indicated that you need additional time. How much more time do you need? And if that time, once it's completed, can we get a map condensed to show us the actual zoning before we act on it? It's kind of difficult to have one big map and then come here and look at it and then make that decision. I would like to review it a little bit before the next meeting or when you're asking for this approval.
Does it help if we send it out? Can you read it on the screen? Or do we need to ask our GIS guy to make us the large copies for each of you?
I think if you send it out as a PDF, you could zoom into it and actually understand it better than a large form of copy.
That's what I would prefer, too.
Yeah.
It's easier.
PDF.
I'd like a paper version.
You'd like a paper version, okay.
Put it on your desk, right? Hang on, look at it.
Have it to the other one. One of each.
Ms. Perkins, or Amy, is there anything else you guys would like to add as far as summarizing this discussion?
The other question that Commissioner Garcia had was how much additional time do we need? And I guess it's not only planning, but it's also legal that needs to weigh in on that.
Mr. Caldwell? Do you need to weigh in on that?
You know, Chairman and Commissioners, this conversation and issue goes well beyond just the maps. It's an attempt to establish a more streamlined process within the Planning Department to deal with zoning changes, and frankly, to deal with how zone change requests are dealt with. They all kind of go together. And I think to do this properly, you're talking about a matter of several months, to be honest. And I think internally, we really need to weigh what the risk of waiting that long is, whether it's likely that there's going to be a development issue on one of the subject properties that is in this gray area, and I'm going to suggest that that risk is not so substantial that we shouldn't take our time and do this properly. I also can't profess to have an intimate knowledge of the land use code as it reads today, and what would be required to do what I think we all know needs to be done. So it's difficult for me to put an exact timeline on that process, but I certainly think it's a matter of several months.
So should we act on declining this, and then let them come back to us when they're ready?
Well, there's nothing requiring us to do any action today as it stands.
It's discussion.
I think, I think what we, I think Mr. Caldwell's cautionary words in taking our time and doing it correct, or the town doing it correct, and then bringing it before us is well taken. And I would, I would kind of put it back in the, in the staff's hands to make that determination on their comfort zone with bringing it forward, because, you know, you could have an issue, but the risk is not necessarily that high, so.
So I'm just trying to clarify, and I don't remember last month if it was an action item or not, and that's where I'm trying to-
It was.
Okay, so don't we need to still deny it?
So we could table it, and we can re-advertise when we're ready? We can redo the legal notice?
I see Commissioner Garcia's point. If we tabled it at the last meeting, and it was rebrought here, even though it's not actionable tonight, do we need to have some kind of motion to table it again or to deny it, so that we don't violate any-
Notication.
-or-
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, Commissioner Patterson?
I think if it's on the agenda as a public hearing, you take action on it.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have a lot of leeway, frankly, in how you deal with this. This is sort of a staff suggestion that's been presented, but is required by law to be treated in the context of a public hearing. I don't think that you really need to make a decision one way or another. By not making a decision, you're not adopting a new zoning map, basically. However, similarly to the last issue dealt with, because there is some public notification required, unless you continue this to a certain date and time in the future, all those notification requirements would have to be met again to consider it in the future. And again, I apologize, but I don't even know the extent of those notification requirements and how burdensome they were, so I might ask staff about that.
Just posting it on the agenda?
The notification is not that burdensome. We actually have to notice in a Taos news and have the 15-day advance notice period, and, and then we need to notice this, this, or whatever the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is. So it's really not a burden. I guess I would feel better about doing the re-advertising when we're really ready to review the zoning map.
So we'll just go through a denial process then tonight?
If you would like, as the attorney says, if you take no action, then no action was taken, nothing. I mean, we're not continuing it to a date certain either.
It just dies out.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Yarvitz, public speaker?
Chairman, can I say?
Sure.
I've also been a student of that map for many years, and there's one particular parcel on there I would like to hear from Planning and Zoning about what it means. There's a parcel across from SIDS, hiding behind the pizza place, 14 acres. If you look on the map, it says R14 PUD, but there's no underlying plans or anything at all to substantiate the PUD. So does that expire at some point, or should that never have been approved, because there are no plans to show what the PUD actually is? But since it was a zone change back at some point, I don't know how it occurred, I was wondering what you're going to do about that going forward.
Well, the PUD expires after a year.
Then should it be removed from the zoning map?
Probably.
Is it a taking if you take it away?
That's the question for Mr. Caldwell, I'm not sure.
Sorry, Mr. Caldwell. Do you see the piece I'm talking about?
I'm not on the record now. I do see it, I don't see the PUD part. It says R14, it says PUD by the standards, and there's a sign up-
I think it's for staff.
... property for sale, zone R14 PUD, and I called the broker to ask him what it means. He's out of Santa Fe, and he doesn't have a clue. Neither do I, frankly. I was wondering what you thought it might mean.
Well, I think we'd all like to get out of here sooner rather than later, so I think my recommendation, Ms. Yarvitz, is that you've brought it up, so if you want to bring it up again with the Planning Department and Mr. Caldwell, that's probably one of those issues that they're going to fix. Correct. So I think I'm going to make the executive decision here that by not doing anything, that it's going to fizzle out, and that you can repost it when you're ready. And we'll just go ahead and move on. Is that okay with everybody? Good. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item 8A. It's a discussion, direction of staff on a presentation regarding new urbanism regarding the traditional neighborhood development district, code 1616230.
It's getting pretty late. This traditional neighborhood development district was asked about in the last meeting. It was the, it's the blue area on the zoning map, and I put together a little PowerPoint thing that, if we turned off one of the lights, I don't know, can you see it on your monitors? So basically, new urbanism is a-
Yes, we can see it on our monitors.
Great, that's what I kind of got. New urbanism is kind of the, going back to how towns were created, towns, villages, and neighborhoods, where you have your plaza or your center of your town, and then you have your, your buildings that go out. Are you going to be changing the slides for me?
If you don't mind, if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to.
Okay, so the principles of new urbanism basically are having walkability, so that everything that you need is close by. I mean, the idea is that you don't need your car, that you can go and get services. It's pedestrian-friendly with its street design. In other words, there's a network of, and that's connectivity. There's a network of trails, there's small blocks, if it's in a city, narrow streets, boulevards, and alleys. And there's public realms, like little pocket parks, to make walking more pleasurable. You have mixed use, so you have a mix of shops, offices, apartments, homes, and- and different levels of income, different types of people from different cultures, ages and races. Again, it's a range of housing types, sizes and prices in close proximity. There's quality architecture and urban design, so there's an emphasis on beauty, human comfort and creating a sense of place. There's special placement of civic uses and sites within the community. And there's human scale architecture and beautiful surroundings. Again, the traditional neighborhood structure is, is adhered to where you have kind of a town center with a public space. The highest densities are in the center and they progressively get less dense as you go towards the edge. And there's the, the center and the edge and a range of densities within a 10-minute walk. In TAOIS, they're actually, you see this if you walk around downtown. And what they're trying to do is get back to this. What they were seeing is, you know, when you go along Paseo del Pueblo Sur, is you kind of got all your strip malls and you've got housing. And there really is no longer any plan, it's suburban in nature. And so the planning staff before me actually requested the new urbanism folks to come and, and present their ideas to them. And then they went ahead and asked for a form-based code by placemakers. That's on additional sites. And so what placemakers looks at is they look at these different zones. So you have your urban core, which is like the center of town. And then you go out and they call these different zones transit zones. So the T1 is more natural with the T5 being, or T6 being your urban core. So you can see in the drawings how, how basically it goes to the urban core where you have your high rises. What they were proposing in this zone was only to go to a T5. But, but the zoning is, is related to, to this concept. So if you go to the next slide. Again, this is talking about, transits are more like, you're looking at the environment as far as density. You're looking at how the buildings, lots, open space, streets are set up and how they're laid out. And it's more about form rather than what the use is. So rather than our traditional zoning where you're separating the uses, they're combining the uses. And it's more about a sense of place and how does it feel? Go to next slide. So in the T1, this is like an example of what the T1 zone would be. It's, you know, basically drainage areas, areas that wouldn't really be developed that well or are kept in a natural condition, like on the edge of a, of a town. Our T2 rural zones are where you have more sparsely settled lands, like with agricultural land, grassland, farmhouses, agricultural buildings, cabins and villas. T3, you're starting to get more dense. T3 is the suburban zone with low-density residential areas, walkable to higher T zones that have some mixed uses. Blocks are large and the roads are irregular to culminate the natural conditions. And the T4 is the general urban zones where you're starting to get much more high-density multifamily residential housing. Concentration, I guess, is more on residential. Streets start to have curbs and sidewalks. And then you have the T5, which is the urban center, which is a mixed use that has retail, office, live work apartments, a tight network of streets with wide sidewalks. You know, landscaping with plantings. And so the closer transect is to the natural zone, the greener it is. However, for sustainable development, the urban core is the area that's with high density is most sustainable as they deplete the least amount of resources and reduce our carbon footprint. So it's kind of like the traditional here in TAOIS. TAOIS is actually referred to by a lot of the new urbanists as being the place where it's actually happening. Because we have our plaza, we have dense development, and then we go on out. Which actually makes TAOIS interesting though, is within a couple of blocks, you can see all these zones. The other thing that they look at is the civic space. So they have parks, greenways, pocket parks, community gardens and playgrounds. And wherever I've done this transit zone, they've actually identified as a separate one. In this code, they actually talk about it as, as a separate deal. And they talk about civic buildings. So the transit planning with a form-based code talks about building, where the building sits, the massing of the building, function and intensity, the uses allowed in each of these zones, and landscape standards and parking standards. And the standards integrate individual property within the public realm. So you have a, a sequence of where you have your core and then the uses or the zones go out from there and there's a clear edge. These elements help regulate the creation of a human environment rather than simply regulating use. So that is what this whole 70 pages is talking about within our current code. They define the T1, T2 world, what the general character is, the place, building placement, frontages, building heights, type of, of space. And so they go all the way up to T5, which is the urban core. And then this is a layout. And to do the TND district, you actually have to have like a, a master plan or an area plan. And that has to be passed by resolution by the Town Council. And then you go back and you actually do an ordinance for each of the different zones. So each zone, each transit zone would be a different zone. And so here they have like, kind of the greenish is the T1. And then the purples are the suburban and general urban. And then you have the urban core, which is a dark purple. And then you also have your civic space. And we have the Family and Youth Center, which is one of the civic buildings. So that was the basic layout. And that's why you see all the different colors of blue and the different ranges of blue. It's actually the purples. And then if we go on, part of this was the Chmisa Verde subdivision, affordable housing. And in this case, even though the code is pretty strict about all the requirements, about the uses, about building massing, this is what we got. So there's a couple photos of this. And then we went around, took pictures this morning and accidentally I put it on video. So the part that worked, which is that link, if we can access it, shows kind of what, where it actually worked. Where you have a, a center area and then you have all these little apartments. And the, the architecture is such that it all blends together and it makes it, it's softer. It's not so stark like what you saw in the last photo. So anyway, that's just kind of an overview of what the zoning was all about, which you asked me about in the last commission meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any Commissioners have any questions or comments for Ms. Perkins on this presentation?
See if she can get the link to her.
Yeah, this is much better. We had a go-to, one that was for sale.
Oh, is this the video or is this?
Is there any way to blow it up like?
I'm sorry, I'm failing technologically here.
Are you trying to sell us a house?
Martha, did you think it was this link?
Yeah, it is that link. Because my ass and I had it on video and you guys don't want to watch a whole video of me walking around. So this kind of, I was hoping that we could actually click on the pictures and blow them up so that you could see this. Yeah, so this is, this is what the intent of this zoning is, is for. Is to make it more, you know, human scale. Where the humans feel like, you know, they're nurtured with the landscaping, that the building is massed correctly, that things are just softer and not so hard. Where you have the gravel front yards and you have cars parked all in the, in the, on the front lawn. And you have a common area like this little patio area where all the, where you build a sense of community. That's what this zone is about.
I'm so glad you liked that project, we designed that in 2009. So with this.
I only have one comment.
This is not, this is not a free advertising.
Commissioner Lee, I mean. I, I only have one thing to add about new urbanism. I think it's a great idea. And I think it fits really well with downtown TAOIS to have, to have a form-based code. And I think in terms of infill in downtown TAOIS, you know, our, our current LUDC is pretty much useless because there's not a single lot downtown that can possibly develop in standards. So I think it's a great idea downtown. I think where it really doesn't fit is where it's a brand-new development. And I think every time new urbanism has done a planned community from scratch, at least the ones I've seen are just blatant failures. They don't fit, they're really bad, because you can never recreate the context of what downtown TAOIS is. You can't take that and recreate it in an empty field. You know, it doesn't work. I love the whole form-based code and all the work that was done by Matt Foster in the previous planning commissions. I would love to see that go forward. There were a couple of big hurdles to us, you know, continuing that and moving that forward. If we wanted to pick that up as a planning process, it would be a great thing. And I think it would really allow the planning commission and the staff to actually contribute their work as, as planners in the development of TAOIS and not necessarily in a reactionary mode of trying to deal with it case by case. So I'm all for the, the, the form-based code that was, that was a tremendous amount of work done on it. It's sitting there and I think it's, we have the capacity to pick it up and continue with it.
So to Ms., to Commissioner Patterson's point though, the, the, the blue areas are kind of exactly what Commissioner Patterson was talking about. They're kind of empty fields.
Be careful of, right? Yeah, yeah. I think where we left off, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Perkins. What's the, what's the name for the neighborhood development plan? Is it a, there's a, there's a name for the, the, there's, there's a scale assigned to, is it a TND? The neighborhood?
Yes, it's a TND.
So there's, there's a scale that's assigned to that one TND, that blue area on that map is a good example of it. In order to carry this zone forward and actually carry it through the town of TAOIS, I think where we left off was there would probably be 16 TNDs. They would have to go through some kind of like schematic design stage and then go through an approval process. That's the one that, that went through that process. And I think there would be one in order, because you're basically taking the zoning code, the zone that we have now, which is C1, C2, R14, and you're replacing that with the T1, T2, T3, T4. And you would have to basically reapply that through town. Is that correct?
That is correct. I have had experience with trying to do other new urbanism projects, primarily in, in Los Alamos. But I've also seen some in Santa Fe and elsewhere. And as you say, I agree with you, I don't think they really work where you're starting with raw land. I think they're better for infill. So in Los Alamos, we had a new urbanism downtown master plan. And when we tried to use the form-based code and apply it, it was just too much. And that's what I find with this code when I was reviewing it. All the approvals that were needed and all the specifics as far as down to the trees, the light posts, all that. It's really hard to apply that strict of zoning to an existing infill project. So what we did is we basically created a, a common zone. And we decided what was going to be allowed in that downtown area zone. And then we put overlays on top. So we had like a town center overlay that went on top of basically the downtown zone. And then we had a neighborhood general and we had a neighborhood commercial. So we decided what uses were going to be allowed. We talked about the massing, we have portals, we did that kind of stuff. But we did it in more of a general conceptual way. So that, you know, architects had a little bit more freedom with how they designed their buildings, but they still had the massing. And what I see a lot of this going to is the historic overlay zone. A lot of the requirements with the historic overlay zone are not that different from the concepts that the new urbanism uses. You know, as far as breaking up the wall faces and having the building blocks so that things are aesthetically appealing and they have the right massing. And then you add the landscaping in. And so I'm thinking that you don't have to be so rigid. Amy and I were amazed by all the detail and how to actually implement it.
Yeah, it was pretty daunting. And it kind of hit a stumbling block and never went any further.
And I believe it.
Ms. Yarvitz, you seem eager.
That looks like a nuclear bomb strike zone map.
Those are all the TND districts that would be. Just wanted to.
How do I read that, is that?
Each of those circles is the center of the TND.
Okay, right.
And as they spread out, that was what was planned by.
Right.
And it would really be difficult. I just wanted to clarify what, to make the, the simplistic view of the difference between current Euclidean zoning and smart code zoning. Under Euclidean zoning, you only care about what is going on and you don't care what it looks like. South Santa Fe Road. We don't care what it looks like, we only care what you're allowed to do. Under the smart code, we don't care what you're doing in these buildings because it's all mixed use, but we do care what it looks like and, and how humans react to the walkability. So you could, you can have a chemical plant in a residential neighborhood as long as the building looks good, because that's employment. As opposed to only commercial here and only residential here. And we don't care how ugly it is, but you can only do what is allowed in that zone. This does not restrict what you can do in these zones, only what it looks like. It's better to look good than it is to feel good. But that's what it's about. Total opposite of what you're doing here. We don't care what you're doing behind those walls. Commercial, residential, density, as long as it looks good from the street. And you can walk to it, just so you understand what it's about. Is that right?
I think it's, it's a broad generalization. There are uses in each one of the, yeah, in each one of the district, there are uses that go along with T1, T2, T3. Right?
I think, I think the difficulty I'm having with this is that you have the, the new urbanism way of doing it, but it's really the old way of doing it.
Sure, exactly.
The town of TAOIS, right where we're sitting here, is a center of, an example of new urbanism. And so is Rancho's. But everything beyond that isn't. It's the, it's the result of Euclidean zoning. And I think the difficulty I'm having is you've got these two main centers that define new urbanism. And we're trying to figure out how to connect them in some kind of cohesive form. And we have the Paseo that's sitting there with all of its commercial glory. And it just doesn't, I'm having a difficult, difficult time visualizing how it will play out.
Commissioner Lee? I, I think you, you can, you can look at it the other way and you can look at it that, you know, that Rancho's and the downtown TAOIS have a very condensed urban fabric. And I think you can have a zoning code that reinforces and builds on that fabric. Or you can have a zoning code that allows that fabric to be decayed and created at the edges. And I think what, what, what a form-based code does is it reinforces that urban fabric and allows it to continue and build upon itself and grow. Whereas if you don't have that, you get a urban fabric that continues to frame and break down with development over time.
So is it, are we trying to give some direction then to staff that would be to try to give another example of what it would look like?
I think my direction to staff would be to, to find a way to reinforce that urban fabric and build on it. And if that means adopting a form-based code in all form or another, or some version of it, then I think that's a good thing. And we should encourage them to do that.
Is that something that staff is desiring to do?
Well, we can do it, we have a, we have a lot of projects we need to deal with, but. Yeah, I mean, we can do it on a softer, in a softer way. And I think we already have a lot of that with our historic district. And, you know, we're talking a lot about its infill development and, and not having all the sprawl, trying to condense and make, make our core, you know, more about the human and at the same time have higher density.
Any other comments from the commission? Thank you for that presentation. I think everybody probably wants to get out of here, but before everybody does, I still want to address the, if anybody was at the last meeting for the, for the Highway Court or, are there any deadlines coming up? Are there any?
They, they do want public comment. And it did sound like that last night was the last time for. last time for public comment as far as a meeting. We do, we did pick up forms, we did get a copy of, or we asked for a copy of their presentation last night. They're looking at three options. The first option is just to get the syncing of the, of the lights in the intersection so that they all are synced up, so that you can go down Paseo del Pueblo Sur and, you know, as, as fast or as slow as you can.
Faster.
But at least the lights are synced, so you don't have the, the long backups.
When there's not traffic.
When there's not traffic. And then, and they are replacing all the signals in town. And then the second option was widening.
It's actually, yeah.
Widening the road. And so, there were some comments last night about, well, maybe you want to widen it, but maybe you also want to think about making it more aesthetically attractive by putting in a bike lane, pedestrian sidewalks, doing some landscaping. And so, they took that back. And then the third option is going with the one-way once you get to the intersection of Placidosias, and going around the block. And that, that option is not very popular. And then again, there's a funding issue. So the way the state highway department kind of schedules these things, they'll do it in phases. So the first phase, they say, is just to try and sync the lights and replace the existing signals. And then farther down, down the road would be actually talking about doing the design for widening the street. And then the third phase would be looking at the one-way. And so, with each phase, and they're talking about phasing it, there'd be more time. So probably widening the street would be designed in like seven years.
So widen Paseo?
Mm-hmm.
From La Posta up to the bottom of the first-
So just make it five giant lanes all the way into town?
Yeah, and you still have to connect down.
And then just bottleneck, really bottleneck it. Huh, okay. Was there any discussion regarding the turn lane issue that we have, or any roundabout discussions?
There were some comments about roundabout, nothing about the suicide lane.
You called it that, I didn't.
[laughing]
It's, it's kind of, I mean, it's kind of discouraging to me that, that there's no, I mean, not that we have any control over it, because it is a, you know, as Mr., Mr. James pointed out, it's a, it's a highway corridor. So it's not necessarily town input, but it does go right through town. And they didn't come and give any presentations to this commission, which is, you know, we're discussing right now the idea of, you know, new urbanism, you know, and trying to make this community build off of the natural density that it has. And then meanwhile, we have a highway that's just kind of, they've just decided on what they're going to do to bring it through the town.
Well, they're still taking input before they do their design, and that's what they stressed last night. And they did talk about a roundabout right in front of the county building. But they said that the right-of-way for that, they were looking, I think, at a two-lane rather than a one-lane, was so wide to make the circle that they would actually couldn't do it with, with the buildings that exist there. And then I also talked to them about Sila Road, there by Smith's in that offset, and they're thinking that they would, you know, obtain right-of-way and straighten up that intersection, but still keep the light. And that was really the only discussion as far as roundabouts and the intersections. But they are open to additional comments. I did put in a call to the highway department. They did call me back once, and we played phone tag. And then I had advertised last night's meeting as a possible P N Z commission meeting. And so, I could ask them if they would mind doing one more presentation up here, if you'd like.
Well, what I don't understand is that we don't really have, I mean, we can give input, but we're really giving it as just individual citizens, which is just a grain of salt, you know?
Unless you, unless you, you know, unless you have, unless you draft a, some kind of position letter from the town of Taos Planning and Zoning Commission that encourages the one way or another, that's, that's input above and beyond an individual.
You know, I could ask David, he's the project manager on this. And I actually had success with him up in Los Alamos. We had the same thing going on with 502. And they made quite a few public meetings, and they actually listened to the town, and there was like very diverse opinions on whether or not to have roundabouts or lights. And I mean, it got very contentious, me kind of in the middle, wanting to bail. And so, in the end, they actually decided on one roundabout as you come into town and, and kept some of the other lights. But the highway department was very good about, you know, extending the time, putting off the design phase, and working with the community. So I really think that if we, if you want them to come up here and talk to you, I mean, they'll do it.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for intervening because this is not a legal comment whatsoever.
Sure.
But I've been to a couple of these public meetings that DOT, through its contracted engineer, has put on, and nobody shows up. And I think it's really disappointing for everyone, including DOT, because I think they genuinely are interested in seeking public comment and in trying to address it. And I would certainly encourage, not only this commission as a body, to develop comments, but also to lean on anyone else you know to do the same. I know that in the buildup to what may be a series of joint meetings between the town and the county, that this issue will be one of those agenda items that will be discussed in, I assume, the hopes of developing a sort of consensus series of comments that DOT will take into account when actually moving forward with some design.
So the, are there going to be like co-joint, joint meetings between the county and the town with this agenda item on it?
Well, there, there's going, there are going to be joint meetings, and I, I know that there's a list of items that will be considered over time. This one's probably not one of the very first priority items, but yes, I think I'm safe representing that this will be one of those items discussed at some point.
Well, if, if that's the case, then I think it would be, you know, Commissioner Patterson's ideas will take. And I think that it would be great to have them present to this commission, and then maybe we can come to a consensus.
And maybe we can get more people there.
I know one of the trouble things that, we own property right on South Santa Fe Road or Paseo, whatever it is now, but, you know, the road widening deal has been around since I was a kid. You know, they've been talking about it. And one of the big things that they have is that the highway easement is not straight down through, through town. I mean, it, it comes in and out, and there's buildings that are going to be affected. One of our properties, you know, the highway right, right-of-way comes to the shoulder, and you go down ten feet, and it comes in fifteen feet. So I know that that's been one of the biggest problems as far as from Sentinel Bank all the way up to the plaza. So I think we'll be buried and gone by the time they widen this river.
We have a comment from the public, it looks like.
Okay, so let's move on to adjournment. Do we have a motion? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
All right.
Is there kind of controversy despite being so small?
Quiet.
Blowing it up a little bit.